Good evening, welcome to the Long Metal Select Board meeting of June 1st, 2015. We may as well start with the Pledge of Allegiance since we're here.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you may have noticed, there's a few empty seats up here. For tonight's meeting, we actually don't have a quorum, so there's nothing that we can vote on. On the agenda, many of the items are going to be pushed aside except for a discussion of water and sewer rates that's going to be presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Paul Pasturzik, and our Town Manager, Stephen Crane. There is an announcement that next Tuesday, June 9th, are our municipal elections. The polls are open from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening. Absentee ballots are available at the Town Clerk's office if you need to do so. If you have any questions, just call the Town Clerk or the Select Board Office. Our numbers are on the website. The only other announcement I wanted to make was, if I could, was the group 745 from Williams Middle School was supposed to sing the National Anthem this evening at the Red Sox game. But, much like our meeting, they're postponed because of rain, so I don't know if they're going to go back there, but Michael Smith is the musical director and they were scheduled to sing the National Anthem. I just wanted to congratulate them for even getting there.
Wednesday at 1:30. They'll be there Wednesday at 1:30.
Oh, they will be?
Yeah, the Police Department color guard is also presenting the colors of the game.
Oh, so this Wednesday, oh, there you go. This Wednesday they'll be singing the National Anthem, that's awesome.
And presenting the colors.
And the Police Department, that's fantastic.
So Wednesday 1:30.
Okay, so...
It's a school day.
Yeah, and a work day.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, since there's, since during, when there's a meeting in which we don't have a quorum and LCTV may or may not stay with us for the discussion on the water rates as long as we go on, we're going to, because there isn't a quorum, we cannot vote on anything that is on the agenda, including minutes. So we're going to skip down to, on the agenda tonight was minutes, Quintetuck Road, some interviews that we're going to do for committees, a long-term capital planning strategy, stormwater utility that were proposed by the Finance Subcommittee, which is Mark and myself, but we're going to put those off as well as Complete Streets. And so we're going to go down, there's a block party approval that we're going to have at another meeting and so the next thing on the agenda would be the water and sewer rate initial review. And Paul, you want to take it from there?
Sure. About this time of the year, we begin to look at the water and sewer rates for the upcoming fiscal year. Historically, it's taken one or two meetings to digest and make a decision on the rates. We figured we would get this to the Select Board early in June, so hopefully we'd have a rate sometime in the early part of July that we can move forward with. Couple of things that have, well, one major thing that has happened this year is that we've fallen very far behind with our revenue projections, especially when it comes to water. Projecting that to be almost $500,000 short from the projected amount, and the sewer amount is about $100,000 short. One of the main reasons that the water projection is short is that the actual rate that is voted does not take effect until, I should say, it does not take effect until it's actually voted. It's a projection forward. By that, I mean the rates that were voted last July, I believe, and it was a pretty substantial increase from, I believe it was $2.39 to $2.78, actually didn't take effect until the water consumed during the period of July, August, roughly through early February of this year. And we only had one billing cycle, and that was March of 2015. The previous billing cycle that we had this fiscal year, which was in September of 2014, was at the old rate. So that is one of the dilemmas that we have, is that we lost a lot of revenue because of the way that the things are billed and we needed to look at things a little bit differently because of the announcement of the rates before consumed. So what I had done actually this year because of that is looked at two things. I looked at updating the five-year average that we have, got information from the Water and Sewer Department regarding billable units, and found that the billable units that we're using in the rate, 850,000 units for water, was overstated. An updated rate is closer to 788 units per year. So in the new projections that we'll show you on the screen in a little while, we're using that updated amount, 788. I also broke it down into these two semi-annual payments. The two semi-annual payments go out in September and March. And as I said, the September payment uses the prior year rate and the March rate uses the new rate that the folks will be voting on. And because we had the, because I broke it down by consumption for those two amounts, it was easy to, well, I would say, I wouldn't say it's easy, but what we did is we took the old rate, multiplied it times the consumption that was projected to be consumed through September, since we already know that rate. And then what I took from that, I had an estimated revenue amount from that. I then subtracted that estimated revenue from the total amount needed or what we think is needed, and that's based upon the budget and other factors that was voted on at the annual town meeting, and then came up with a secondary rate of what we would have to bill in the second half of the fiscal year to meet the expenditure demands. Given those two factors, we kind of did, we plugged in those two revisions and there's a proposal before the Select Board Water and Sewer Commissioners, at least to start the discussion regarding those two changes in how we do business here a little bit. It is a little bit more of a precise methodology, I would say, and hopefully it's going to lead us to rates that will be substantiated a little bit better and get us to where we need to be when it comes to infrastructure and things of that nature. Now, the rates that I currently have proposed to the Select Board, and what you'll see on the screen, do not take into consideration any setup of reserves or capital items that have not been voted yet. There is a five-year program of water and sewer projects, we know what those are, and there is no consideration at this point in time to build those into the rates. That is something that the Commissioners and the Select Board, whoever you want to call themselves tonight, will have to discuss. Part of that, whether it's an increase for capital purpose or an increase just to get the reserves up. I've also gave them, the Select Board members, a historical perspective of where our fund balances were for water and sewer. And for the watching, viewing audience, it's been a drastic decline. Our water beginning retained earnings account in FY13 had $927,000. At the beginning of FY14, it dropped to $470,000. At the end of FY, or at the beginning of FY15, it went down to $360,000. And is projected to be $85,000 at the beginning of FY16 and basically one month from now. The sewer, we, beginning of FY13, we had just over a million. At the beginning of FY14, we had $841,000. Beginning of FY15, $622,000. And is projected to be $386,000, again, July 1st of 2015. We're on the decline, we're mainly on the decline because these water and sewer fund balances have been used for capital projects and have not been replenished.
Paul, isn't it felt fear else to say that...
It's been declining to balance the water and sewer, but, well, at least especially on the water side, because usage fell below our projections and we needed to make up the difference in expenses?
To some degree, yes. When our revenue projections have been short, and it's not necessarily the case in the Sewer Department, we have been pretty on target with the Sewer Department. We have been short in the Water Department. But that sewer decline, I'm going to have to say, is mostly a function of us using those funds for capital projects and then not being replenished.
Right, that was a conscious decision, at least on some of us, to use...
Yes, it certainly was a conscious decision. And with regard to the Water Department, I think it's been both. I believe we fell short in our water projections last year by a slight amount. We did not do any water capital out of retained earnings this last May. However, I believe in May of a year ago, I believe we did take out money out of the water retained earnings. And those two things, the fund balances suffer because we do that. Again, we're getting drastically low in those accounts. We would like to see them higher. Basically, what they are used for is capital. So whether we bond and we raise the rates through the debt service or whether we have available funds that we're able to take out of the capital, it's one way or another, the capital project needs are not going to stop in town. The infrastructure is in need of replacement in some areas, you know, more quicker than others. So we do need to take that into consideration when we're moving forward.
Paul, when you talked about billable units and we went from an average of 855, we're now going to go down to, or 850 down to 855?
788.
855,000 billable units to 788,000. If you just do a quick calculation, you know, it's about 62,000 billable units. It's about 150 grand, a little bit less than that, depending on which rate we use, whether it's the 239 or 278. So my question is, if there's a half a million dollars short, where'd the other 350 kick in from? So if we just go by the average...
If you go by with water?
Yeah.
Now, I also have to understand that the water rates last year, the $850,000 units, were based upon a rate of $2.78 for the full 850 units.
Okay, so that's where...
That was not the case. The first half of the year was billed at the former rate and only the second half, the March billing, was billed at the higher rate of $2.78.
So, you know, I was going to do this on the board here, but I think people need, at home, need to understand, Paul, you and I had this conversation quickly this morning. People need to understand that even though it may be July when we vote the rates, they go, they don't go into effect until August, for which people are billed in March.
Right.
So it's August 1st through, if you will, July 31st, which would be the next time we reset the rates, right? And so even though we plan on paying for this entire fiscal year, the payments that they make in September are based on last year's rates because it was last year's...
It was last year.
...water usage. And so that's one of the reasons, is that this year's budget requires a revenue, but we're actually using the rates from last year. So that's part, that's part of why we're six months behind, I think.
Right.
And people need to understand that.
You know, one of the other big factors also in this is the, we buy our water from the city of Springfield and we have, we get serviced, our sewage gets serviced from the city of Springfield. We, there are large increases anticipated from the city of Springfield. Now, they did not materialize this year. And, you know, I looked at just the water where we had anticipated for FY16 a year ago. There was going to be, the FY16 amount of a year ago was, I think, $1.2 million that our estimated bill was. It turned out to be only a million. So there's about a $200,000, I don't want to say gain, but I'm just saying that the city of Springfield, we get erratic numbers from them to a certain degree. They're not consistent. Like I said, that one, that year made a $200,000 difference. And I don't know if they delayed some of their capital to a certain degree or what they have done, but we tried to project based upon what, you know, the best information that we have. And again, we find out that a lot of things are changing with their numbers as we move forward.
Stephen, I just emailed you a spreadsheet I did. I don't know if you've got your email up or you can get your email up. I was wondering if, because I, I mean, otherwise I could try to throw mine up there, but since you're on the system, I was wondering if you could try to just look at that spreadsheet and pull that spreadsheet up. Because Paul, what I tried to do is, is take, instead of looking at the detailed numbers like you did, put them into the categories you and I spoke about in terms of Springfield water charges, long metal operating costs, debt service. And then, and look at each of those as a lump sum number and then as a, if you will, per unit number. Did you, were you able to find it, Stephen? I don't know if it makes sense, but if you can put that up here. I was going to just kind of go through, Paul, for you and folks at home, so they could see what, what we did. Thank you.
I do want to say, before you get going, Mark, it's technically the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission.
What do we call it? City Springfield, it's not the, City Springfield, it's an independent...
Yeah.
Well, it's technically the Water and Sewer Commission. We've been in contact with them about ours. It turns out our, I've reported on this in the past about the sewer contract. And to speak to Paul's point, their planning process in terms of their projects, I do think it evolves over time and a lot of the projections of rates are due to projected capital needs and capital expenditures. And so I think there is, to some extent, some, you know, they're guessing forward in a given year. And if they can't do a project for whatever reason, then that expenditure doesn't take place, so I mean, it's...
Right, so the charges, they charge us for water based on their capital program as well as the actual cost of running their department, right?
Yes.
So, and also, we should say that the amount of water they bill us for is different from the amount of water we bill residents for because there's a small loss in the system or a difference in the system.
Water flushing, wire suppression, things like that.
Right, but I've ignored that. So if you look at what I did here, Paul, and you can look at this, I took this, forget about the top part first here, but I took the Springfield water charges, okay? And you can go back whatever year you want, but this is the bulk amount we paid the city of Springfield, okay? And I used the assumed water amount, which isn't the actual water amount, to come up with an approximate or calculated rate. That's not what we paid the city of Springfield, we pay more because we use less, but... And then I took our operating cost, which is right off our budget. And I took the debt service that we had for each year. And again, divided it by that number and got a dollar amount. And that comes down to what we would have needed to charge to break even, okay? This is, in fact, what we actually charge. So you can see, when you look back on 2013, we actually lost three cents a unit, if you will, okay? And you look at 14, we lost six cents. And the reason we did is because the actual usage wasn't this amount of money and so these numbers didn't, didn't really calculate. And then you look at the current year, and again, we charged less than what our actual costs were. So now I started moving forward and I threw in some numbers because they're just placeholders. But again, the current year budget, we know what the city of Springfield's going to be charging us based on this usage, right? That's the number you'd give me, right? And then this is our budgeted operating conditions and this is our budgeted debt service. I also threw in there, because I thought we needed to, some, we need to rebuild our water stabilization fund. And the reason we need to do that is because if we had a main water, major water break, we don't have the funds to do that, to repair that.
It also costs a lot of money to borrow if you don't have reserves.
Okay, so, but anyway, if you look at that, and you used, and I used 28785 instead of, what did you use? 780 or 8 or something?
788, very close.
I rounded it down instead. But for each one of these, you can see it's a dollar four for the city of Springfield rate, 99 cents for our, running our department, 74 cents for our debt service, which is 277. So if you look at it, next year, you know, to operate, break even, we'd need 277, right? That's without the debt service built into it. And then I escalate these based on numbers the city of Springfield gave us for water moving forward.
Yep.
Right, I escalated this at a couple of percent. I just, I don't know what our debt service is going to be, so I just put in a number that we used in the past.
We, well, we, you know, I can update that for you, but it'd be the actual...
But when I looked at that and then I kept in something to build back our half a million dollar target over five years, we could do it faster or slower, I'm just throwing something in. The bottom line is, our water rates to break even would be 277, 312, 310, 345, and 328 over five years. And then if you build in that reserve of $100,000, which is 13 cents, it comes out to 290, 324. And what you end up with is a water rate that's going up and down. And one of the things we talked about, Paul, we did is, how would you smooth it? So, you know, how would you take this so that instead of from 290 to 324 to 323 to 357 to 340, one way to smooth it would just be to throw in these numbers, which actually gives you the same rate, the same, the average rate that's, that's the right rate. Gives you the right amount of income. At the end of the five-year period, you've got your reserves built up, but clearly things are going to change every year because we're not going to use 785,000 units and things are going to change. But I think if we updated this bulk model with debt service, we decide how fast we want to build the, build the reserves back up and you tweak this, Paul, this might give us, I don't know, Paul, but this would give us a sense to set up some kind of smooth target for water rates rather than be responding. I don't know, Paul, if you, you're seeing this for the first time, I understand, but...
Yeah, no, I completely follow it.
But I'm trying to break it down to bulk value, unit value, and then what we have to smooth. So that's the kind of thing we did last September when we met, when we last talked about it. And, and we were just using very different numbers because back then, the city of Springfield was talking about, you know, $400,000 higher here or 400, you know, much, much higher capital projects. So I guess the question is, is that an approach we could take? And if we did, what refinements do we need to do to the, to the debt service and to the, some of the, some of the other stuff? And is this a good way to do it rather than anything else?
Well, again, that's why I brought this out this early in the game with the recommendation that the full board have the discussion and bring it back to the, to the Subfinance Committee for exactly that type of scenario, which we had spoke about last fall. Iron that out, just we work out the details. You know, again, certainly we can, as far as the debt service is concerned, we know what the actual debt service today is going off into the future. We can easily plug in that number. We know, or we can project based upon, you know, certain levels of expenditures moving forward on the capital. We can plug those numbers in or, you know, as you have in there, build up the reserve to maybe handle that. But yeah, we can, we can use that model and, and again, just refine the actual numbers.
Paul, one of the other things that I, does this, when you talked about earlier about, you know, we set the rates in July and the first bill was in March or February or whatever it was, for the, with the new rates.
Yes.
Doesn't it, doesn't that make the case then that we probably, we really need to look? I understand there's increased costs, but with quarterly billing, to get that, that rate change in there faster?
You could, but, you know, with quarterly billing, it adds a lot of extra costs because, you know, you have 5,600 bills that go out.
Yeah.
And just with postage and printing and interest rates being so low that you're losing a couple thousand, I mean, again, you could do it, but you, it's going to, it's going to add more money to the budget actually to do it. So just be aware of that.
I understand, but one of the things that we talk about is, you know, you set a bill, you set a rate in July, which is for forward money but for billing backwards.
No, I understand.
Right, but if you did it quarterly...
You would be able to capture three quarters of the year instead of half of the year at a new rate.
So I understand we have to pay money to do the mail-ins and the processing and I get that. But if it saves us from having such a huge deficit over the course of the year, especially in this scenario, we know the rates aren't going down, you know, we, I mean, there's a, you know, a couple of years projected where it could go down and so forth. But the reality is Springfield's going to need infrastructure improvement in their system that we have to pay for. And I, and I understand the increased costs, but I think it might do the town better to start at least looking at. And I don't know if we can bill quarterly but still send out a semi-annual bill and have two portions, like the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, as...
Yeah, that might be tough with the system. If we, if we're going to do it quarterly, we would have to bill and collect quarterly.
So the other question is, would we be, you know, another option, I guess, is, could we, could we, would we even want to think about setting rates semi-annually instead of annually? So that, just like we do for taxes, you know, people get their tax bills in July and we don't set the tax rate in November, but you do an estimated rate, right? And then in July, we, then in November, when we, when we settle on the rate, there's an adjustment to second half of the year. Sometimes it's actually down, in fact, most years, I think, it's down a little bit, you know? But what if we were to do that so that we billed, we told people now what their rate's going to be August through February? And then in January, we tell them what the rate's going to be March through July or August, I mean...
That would certainly be an optional way also. Again, that would address the volatility of the seasonal nature, whether you're having a drought period or whether you're having heavy rains. You would be able to address those with increases or decreases in rates accordingly.
Okay.
And again, the model is set up, it's not that hard to plug in the figures. This is something if the Water and Sewer Commissioners, again, you'd have to be on a strict schedule because we're, we would be setting rates as we do now. Sometimes we're up against the wall in July setting rates because we need to get a bill out or a reading in early August. So again, there would have to be a structure and a deadline that would have to be known by the Water and Sewer Commissioners that they need to follow.
Is there any way we can try to get two payments that more represent the current fiscal year? Because right now, the September payment, which is based on an August billing, literally represents last year's rate and last year's usage. Or it represents four months of last year's usage, two years of this year's usage, but six months of last year's rate, right? Is there any way of, you know, any timing change that we might have, might be able to do? Even if we had to bill for four months one time in order to make up the, make that shift?
We could probably tweak it a little bit, but you have to remember too that these months were particularly chosen because we didn't want to have the bills simultaneously go out with the, with the tax bill. We wanted to avoid having those payments due, you know, right when taxes are due August 1st, taxes are due November 1st. We wanted to make sure that the people did not get a tax bill and a water and sewer bill each due at the same time. That is some of the reason why this was chosen in the fashion that it was. We could probably tweak it a little bit and we could, instead of like the bills going out September 1 and due necessarily August 1st, we could probably update that a little bit so that the bills are read in early July, or actually probably in June, so they go out July, well, they would go out, they would go out, say, August 1st and they would be due September 1st as opposed to being billed September 1st. So we could probably tweak it by one month, but that's all that we would get out of that. Again, we don't want to have, we don't want to bill tax bills and water and sewer bills so they're due on the same dates.
Right, okay.
Now, a lot of this is based, predicated on our policy choice of billing, of having a rate known when consumption is made.
Correct.
So, and I completely get the principle of that, but if we wanted to take a more businesslike approach, would an option be to, is getting away from that policy, an option that could simplify things?
That, well, that would be another option also, that you would then have the rate in effect for the billing cycle right away.
Right. In other words, we bill people in September at the fiscal year 2016 rate instead of at the fiscal year...
Right, right, which would only be announced in, you know, announced in June, per se.
Right.
So they would have had three or four months of consumption prior to the rate being known. But yes, that's an option, that's what we used to do prior to this setup. That's how it was handled.
Right.
And I believe probably that's how most communities have it handled also. That they set the rate, the rate goes into effect that day for the, or I should say, for the next billing cycle, whenever they set it, yes.
Which financially is a better system for us in terms of meeting our financial requirements for the Water Department. But it's not necessarily allowing residents to adjust their usage based on a rate change.
Right.
The only time where this works out for, for the town, when I say by work out, meaning we don't have deficits like this, is if there's actual greater consumption than what our estimate of billable units are. That's the only time where the town is at ease in the sense of the Water Department meaning that our revenue is, we know it's coming in because we just had that much more usage.
Right.
But we have to, and there's got to be something done, if we get back to how we used to do it, somewhere along the line, because no matter when we set the rates, we're setting it going forward based on what just happened without knowing really what the total consumption is. Is there, I know that we have the ability to, you know, read water meters driving by and so forth with the, with the, reading them over the airways. For the, for trash and recycling, we get a chart, you know, that says, here's where we are. You get that, you know, the ups and downs. Is it, is this, is the water rates, are the water rates monitored along the same way? Or the water usage, like the trash consumption, I mean...
I think we could, yeah.
I was going to say, or maybe that's something we need to do.
You could certainly get the flows at the pump station.
But we do get that.
Right.
We get purchases from Springfield in that chart, Paul, every month. in that chart, Paul, every month, because I, I watch that. What, but I was told, right or wrong, and I think that you have to go back to Badger and get a, a separate software, because whenever they read the meters, it recount, it resets the billing thing, so that, you know, if you read a meter, it resets the computers, our central computer is zero.
You have to, if you read the meter, you have to bill. Otherwise, the next round of consumption...
Is based on that, that last meter, but I'm, I think they told me that, oh, we can make an adjustment, obviously, but it'll cost us in some of the, in the software system to, you know, so that you can read without it, it doing that reset, but currently, our system doesn't do, doesn't allow that.
I mean, I think the point is, the point is, what's the point?
Right.
It, you know, I don't inherently agree with the notion that government should run like a business, but any utilities that the government operates must run like a business. We need to run our water and sewer, sewer utilities as if they are essentially private utilities. And apply some business practices, and that means all the things you're talking about, which is try and stabilize charges to customers as best as possible, build reserves, and invest in the capital. That said, one of the things that, that is, that has become business practice is, Paul alluded to, both on the private and the public side, is, is setting the rate and all the chart, and all the bills that go out for that fiscal year are, are at that rate. And so that's where I think, you know, rather than, you know, basically, to get to what you wanna do, there's a free way to do it, and that is get away from that policy versus, and I, like I said, I, I get in principle why wanting to know what the consumption, what the rate is for consumption is, is good, but it makes, it, it has a lot of challenges with trying to run the water and sewer utilities like a business. And truth be told, I'd be interested to see how much people would change their behavior. I mean, I think people should be consuming water in a responsible way, no matter what the rate is. So I, you know, I don't know if, if someone says, oh, I don't know what my water rate's gonna be, so I'm not gonna do this load of wash or something like that. I mean, I don't know that that would happen.
Well, yeah, if you think about your other utilities, you know, when you get your electric bill, it says, this bill is based on these rates, and then those rates are probably different from the rates the prior month, but it's based on rates that they told you after you consumed your electricity, and, you know? But this was an intent because, A, because it's six months rather than a month, and some of the bills could be rather large. I think the, the thought was people wanted to, if at all possible, let people know what's going on. I think, you know, by being conservative in our estimate of usage, I think that we can continue to do what we would like to do and still not run into trouble with our, I mean, for me, the problem we've got right now is that we've been chewing up our reserves, and if you look at the numbers I was showing, in each of the last five years, we've actually billed at a rate lower than what we needed to bill at to break even, and the difference has been coming out of our reserves. I mean, in the water side, we've been pulling more. So if we, if we estimate low and the usage is high, all that means is the following year, we don't need to go up as much because people, you know, because we've been able to build our reserves the prior year. So maybe the answer, or a solution, Stephen, isn't necessarily to, you know, reverse our decision on, on on announcing rates prior to usage, but rather become more conservative in our estimate of what the usages are gonna be.
I, and again, that's, was kinda was, that's what was proposed here with the seven hundred eighty-eight, but I was taking it one step further. What I've done here is because you know the rate that's gonna go out at the beginning of the fiscal year, I, I would take that revenue estimate and then base the second half's rate on what is needed for the remaining part of the fiscal year, as, as was done in my projections also. Because again, you know what the rate is, you have an estimated consumption for that first half of the year, the second half will be based upon what the remaining amount needed is.
Right, I was just, I guess, Paul, I was surprised that your numbers were a lot lower than ours, but then again, you didn't take into account debt service and a few other things.
Well, right, I did not take into the account a hundred thousand dollar reserve that you put in there. And going off, I mean, again, I only did it for FY sixteen, I did not make a projection for FY seventeen. I forget what amount you had for FY sixteen.
Right, I, I've actually got a paper copies of this stuff.
Okay. I can put it back up. I mean, your rate for FY sixteen is two ninety-six.
Paul, in your, in your FY sixteen estimate, you have the Springfield water charges going down dramatically, that's, that's known?
For, I'm sorry, for what year, Paul?
FY sixteen estimates on your spreadsheet?
Yep.
That's a known...
That, that, that is, that is based upon the most updated information coming out of the commission, something that we received in the spring, actually was received back in December, and that's what the FY sixteen budget was based upon. Mark, you know, the couple, the couple things, again, the hundred thousand dollars that you have built in reserve is almost thirteen cents on the rate, from what I have.
Right.
And also the fact that you're billing the two ninety-six, you're taking into consideration the two ninety-six being billed for the full seven hundred and eighty-five thousand units.
Right.
I don't, because that first billing is going out already at, it's gonna go out at two seventy-eight. Because we know, because of the practice that we have, that first billing is going out at two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
My two ninety-six is for the March billing.
I, I don't see where you took into consideration the first half.
Well, I, I did, you're right.
Okay.
Right, so I think, what, what, based on your proposal to get what you wanna do, I mean, that's where I think we can't, or it's much more difficult to get to the, the goals you want and stick with that policy. Though, like I said, I think is, you know, on a prin, like I said, on a principle level, I understand it, but I don't know how necessary it is, and it does have impacts on our ability to, to run the business.
Right, so...
And which, I'm just, are you talking about adding a hundred thousand a year to the reserve balance?
I'm, I'm talking about in the, in principle, building reserves, smoothing out rate fluctuations, stabilizing rates, and billing, having the billing applied to all the bills that go out in the fiscal year, not, not just the half of bills that go out in the fiscal year. So those are, those are the three things I'm kinda talking about, which is exactly what Mark is doing here.
Right.
So, on this, we agree.
All right, so...
Yeah. Paul, just...
No, I just wanna, 'cause I think, right, 'cause we're in the same, I think we have to do this, I think we have to...
Yeah, no, I, I, again, I, I, I think between the way that Mark has his proposal and the way that I have mine, I think if we take some of the best of both worlds here, we would come up with, 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 I don't say a compromise, but we would come up with something that is gonna answer these questions.
Right, I, I guess, part of the, the difference is that, that the, based on, let's say we went to two ninety-six, just, so our revenue would be, based on your numbers, Paul, two hundred ninety-six thousand units at two dollars and seventy-eight cents, and, excuse me, three hundred ninety-three thousand units at two, two seventy-eight cents, and then next Septem- September, two hundred ninety-six thousand units at two dollars and ninety-six cents, right? That's, that's your six-month usage kinda things. Right, 'cause you took that's...
I, I, what, what I did for my water revenue, I have three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar units, three hundred and thirty-five thousand units. That is the average five-year amount billed in, in September.
Right.
And I multiply that by the two dollars and seventy-eight cent rate that's in effect right now. That gives us nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
From that, the remaining amount was still another one point one six million dollars that needed to be raised to meet our, our obligations. I divided that by the four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar units, which is the average, the five-year average of the second half billing, to come up with my rate of two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Right, I saw that, but, but really, what we're saying is that this Septem- September, we expect to bill three hundred and thirty-five thousand units at two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
So if we build four hundred and fifty-three thousand units next March
Right.
at two ninety-six, not two sixty-five.
Right.
Okay? Then we're gonna get closer to this revenue. That was my, that's my point. In other words...
Yes, we would get closer to that two point three million dollars worth of revenue, 'cause I'm only estimating we're a two point one million dollars of revenue in, in my projection. So your higher rate of two, two dollars and ninety-six cents in the second half versus mine of two forty-six, or two fifty-six,
Right.
That forty cent differential is getting that extra two point some odd million, two point, I should say, two hundred and thirty or forty thousand dollars.
Which, which is what we need to do to...
Oh, absolutely, I'm just saying, the, the, the best of our worlds, that mine needs to be tweaked for reserves and things like that. I think yours need to be tweaked for the second to two billing cycles that are going out with rates that are known in the first billing cycle, and then what we need in the second billing cycle to come up with our projected needs for the year.
Okay, so here's my last question to you, Paul, okay? What would it take for us, or could we, create a water budget that's two-thirds sixteen, one-third seventeen, two-thirds fifteen, you know, or, you know what I'm saying, that, so that this amount of this and this, and a percentage of each of these match our billing cycle?
It would be nice, but when we come to retained earnings and thing with the Department of Revenue, we're on a July first to June thirtieth basis, so...
Well, I understand that, so we'd have two sets of books, one just to try to balance the...
I've been accused of that already, please.
I shouldn't use that phrase, but, but we'd be able to literally balance, balance actual expenses versus actual revenue for the same period of time that our revenues, you know, so the expenses cover the same period of time our, our revenue covers.
I, I'm gonna have to think about that a little bit.
Yeah, and I'm not having two sets of books.
No, I understand, it's just, it's just...
You know, what are our actual expenses from City of Springfield and for our own usage for that period of time from August first through, you know, July thirty-first, which is really the period ti, and it's not even that, it's really when we get get the money in.
Right, it's, you know, almost all the way through October first.
Right.
By the time we get, get the money. You know, wouldn't it be hard to do? I can break down the annual books into monthly, and, and we just take the different twelve-month periods.
How much off really are we? I mean, we're just gonna be off a couple of percent, I think, aren't we? And is it worth worrying about it, is my figure, 'cause if it's not even worth worrying about it, then just set, say, yeah, we're gonna use two dollars and ninety-six cents, and we're gonna bill that in March, and we're gonna bill it next September, and yeah, it doesn't perfectly balance this year, there'll be a plus or minus in our stabilization fund, and the next year we go up, and there's a plus or minus, but over the long term, it all works out.
But I, I, I guess I'm, I had a little concern about the stabilization fund fluctuation because of the timing. Because again, the retained earnings is, is set July first, and, and if we're talking about projects that are coming out of retained earnings, that year that it's down, we're not gonna be able to use that retained earnings amount, because it won't be certified by the Department of Revenue.
Well, maybe then our policy ought to be to use that retained earnings simply to, to level rates as opposed to use it for, for capital projects. I mean, we only started using it for capital projects when we, at least on sewers, when we had a million bucks in the sewer project. But the original intent, I think, is to level rates, isn't it? Or for emergency, you know, repair type, type projects, but maybe we shouldn't, we shouldn't even try to do it for our routine water projects.
But you need to get, I think it's a half a million or something like that.
We, we need, we need to establish a rate, or an amount greater than it is today, there's no doubt.
Right, because like I said, on our bond rating call, the retained earning, they, they, it's just like our, it's like our operational stabilization fund. The, the folks who rate the debt, who rate the debt for the water and sewer utilities look at those reserves, and interest, the costs are higher if we don't have reserves, and they're, and they're too low, and I mean, the bottom, I mean, I guess this is understandable.
And our policy, I thought, was half a million dollars, so...
Right, but, and I think the policy was a half a million dollars, and I think, I think we're overthinking this a little bit, because uh, the, we, rates just need to be higher. We need to collect more revenue, and how you do it, there, there, there's many ways to skin the cat, but there's a couple of ways that are just straight ahead and easy to understand, and the most, I, I don't wanna use the word transparent, but the most intuitive, where someone, we always hear transparency, people can see the information, they just don't understand it, so they say it's not transparent. In this case, there's, there's ways to do it that people can look at and say, okay, I understand that, 'cause we're compared to, you know, electric bill, a cable bill, the other utilities, and that's, that's kinda what I'm saying, is, and like I said, I think your system here kinda gets us closer to that, so I, I, I think this is a good start. You know, the cost for Comcast or, or Columbia Gas to bill us, to meter and bill us every month is built into the rate. And I don't know if the, uh, the cost benefit analysis has been done, but for us to get there, eventually, you could stabilize the rate, but the amount of op, the amount of operating overhead we would need would go way up, and so I, I think it's, I don't think we'd get the bang for the buck, if you will, spending all that money to do the meter readings and the, and even quarterly billing versus just having a, a more simplified rate-setting process that, um, like, like we said, you know, charges according to the, the rates according to what, to what they are when the bills go out, not when the water's consumed.
Right, and that, that's a discussion that the board's gonna have as a whole, and, and the current makeup of the board has moved us toward know the rates before you consume it. That doesn't mean that we're gonna do that forever, 'cause up until two years ago, we didn't do that, do that, so...
Well, but I think we're highlighting that there's been a financial impact to that, and especially with the rates jumping, sorry, the, the, the consumption going down, which means the rate goes up. If nothing else changes, the rate goes up 'cause consumption's going down, which is in some ways a positive thing. And then you've got, we know, the Water and Sewer Commission is going to elevate rates for infrastructure needs that they've deferred for many years that they're gonna put in.
Well, the other thing to it, it was really magnified this year because of the large increase from two dollars and thirty-nine cents to two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, you know, our prior increases from eleven to twelve, or, you know, we had a pretty big one, it was twenty-two cents, but then it only went up a penny and nine cents the next two years, so it, it didn't have a big impact, but when it goes up thirty-nine cents and you're missing half of the billing units at, at that increase, that has an impact.
And, and, and even going up thirty-nine cents, it should've gone up to two eighty-seven, it should've gone up, you know, forty-eight cents, just to keep even, or something like that.
Right, it should've been higher to, to maintain.
It should've been higher, I mean, we, we subsidize this out of, to, well, you can see to the tune of a lot of money out of our wat- water...
Retained, right, the retained earnings.
Retained earnings, so, you know, I mean, to me, that, you're right, you can do this a lot of ways. I mean, you can reduce this number, or you can, you know, increase this number, and it's gonna come out the same, right? But we gotta raise more money, 'cause we're, we can't continue to, to a point where our, our water, you know, retained earnings are can't cover the cost of repairing a water main break.
Here's, I've been just playing around with numbers. Even if we set the rates for FY sixteen at two dollars and ninety-six cents at the seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand units, we barely, we don't even get to the operating cost. So if I take three hundred and thirty-five thousand units that you're talking about at...
Three, okay, well, the, the first billing is three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Right, so if I took that, just multiplied it by two ninety-six.
Right.
And then took the fourth fifty-three and multiply that by two ninety-six, we don't even get to two point three six eight, three six million. We're slightly below that. It's about two million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so. So, there's, because that rate's based on, what you gave us in the spreadsheet's based on eight hundred fifty thousand units. My only point is that there seems to be a couple of dynamics in there that are affecting the rates. It's not just the, what we estimate for billable units, it's also the usage, which is down. So to talk about conserving water, I think the town has done a really good job of that over the years, uh, because it's not just based that we've had multiple rainy seasons, but I just took those seven hundred and eighty thousand units at two dollars and ninety-six cents, and we come out to two, we don't even cover the FY sixteen expenses. We're shy by about thirty thousand dollars.
Well, I, I took seven hundred eighty-five thousand units, Paul.
Yep.
Okay, with, by two ninety-six, and it comes up to two point three million.
Right, and I'm saying this is two point three six million is our estimated for, our current estimate for FY sixteen.
You see, so, is that different from this? I thought this was pretty close to what you had, Paul.
Um, it, it's like ten thousand dollar difference. I have two million one hundred and sixty-three thousand that we need to...
Okay.
That, that, that's the budget, but I also back out seventy-four thousand.
Oh, right, right.
My number is two million eighty-nine thousand that we need to raise, so, you know, it's eighty-five thousand dollar difference.
But I'm looking at the FY sixteen estimates on the spreadsheet you gave us. It says amount to be raised from rates in FY...
Two million eighty-nine thousand?
No, two million three hundred and sixty thousand.
Come, move over a column.
You're in FY sixteen.
That's sixteen, no, that's sixteen.
I thought they were seventeen, okay, sorry.
The two, the two point three is FY fifteen.
So, so Paul Pesterzic, my question is, so how do we come up with a rate? I mean, because, because literally there's twelve different ways to get you twelve different numbers that are all within a few cents of one another.
I, I think you and I, with your methodology and my methodology are relatively close. The only thing that I personally don't have is the hundred thousand dollars that you have built in to amount to be added to reserves.
But, and so my question is, do you disagree with the fact that we need to build?
No, no, I do, I do not disagree with that. Again, I, my closing sentence is when there, these are the types of things that we need to iron out.
Okay.
You know, the other thing that, that, um, that you, that you don't have that I have is, again, the rate being split for the fiscal year. I think you would need to take that into consideration. And if we're gonna look at long-term smoothing, then again, you, I, I only did it for FY sixteen, but we would have to take into consideration. The long-term smoothing effect of, of, of the Springfield projections that are going up. Or down, because they, they do fluctuate from year to year. Um, and, and again, I, I just think we're very close, Mark, we, we just gotta tweak it so we, we have, where we use the same numbers. Um, if you wanted that five-year smoothing, I can carry mine out also into that, I mean, I can give you the actual debt service. What is in place today for FY seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty. Um, and I, I think we're gonna come out with the same number.
Well, okay, that, I, I, you know, clearly it's a board decision of whether to do long-term smoothing or not. I just think it makes a whole lot of sense for residents not to get a. Literally a, a thirty four cent jump when all, you know, when they can get away with a, you know, a fourteen cent or thirteen cent jump or whatever it is.
Well, you know, it's one of those things, pay me now or pay me later, it's so you, what you have done is we're, we're taking it in FY seventeen to, you know, offset eight. They were taking FY sixteen to balance out seventeen.
Right, and, right, I mean, this is, this is not smooth and this is what it looks like smooth.
So, yeah, that would be a board policy decision. I, I don't disagree with that either.
You're, you're saving money, you're, you're saving, so you're saving money two out of the five years.
Right.
And, you know.
Again, I have no problem with that, again, that's why, again, the last paragraph of my.
We can't set rates five years fixed, I mean, there's gonna be two different select.
No, I mean, we'll have to update that every year.
Right.
But there's a certain amount of revenue that is anticipated to come in that is going to be applicable. When we receive it in FY sixteen that we're assuming we're gonna apply it to FY seventeen.
Right.
And, and, and that's, you know, that amount is simply determined.
Almost short of, Stephen, what you said is. Bill at the rate ineffective billing and not the rate that's ineffective during consumption.
Well, I think if you guys are open to that change or at least having a more protracted discussion about it. Then that can be something that the board can revisit, you know.
Paul, what do you think about that?
I'm still trying to figure out where, you, you, early on, you mentioned there's a half a million dollar deficit. Or we're short a half a million bucks.
I mentioned there's a half a million dollar debt deficit, and that's based upon the current revenues this fiscal year.
In FY fifteen.
In FY, in FY fifteen, our, our revenues are, are running a half a million dollars.
So when I'm looking at your spreadsheet, which one should I look at, the revised calculation?
This spreadsheet does not even take into consideration that actual revenue, these are all projections. These are what we, in FY fifteen was the projection that we actually did last year, so there's no actuals shown anywhere on, on my projections.
All right, so where's, where's the deficit from? Because I think if we're gonna start to address that type of deficit, then we need to figure out what the problem is before.
Basically, what we said in FY fifteen is that we were gonna raise two point three six million dollars in revenue.
Yep.
We're only gonna have about one point eight six million dollars in revenue.
Because of the, it can't be just because of the eight fifty in billable units.
No, but you also have to understand that that two point three six was estimated at billing two dollars and seventy eight cents. For the full, for at two cycles, we only billed at one cycle at that rate.
Right, that's where I was getting at, that even if we had a, a rate of two dollars and ninety six cents, which is Mark was projecting for next year. We still wouldn't have covered that, even at seven hundred and eighty eight thousand units, so is, is the half a million attributed to only the decrease in the billable units?
No, it's, it's attributable to both. It's attributable to the billable units, non-meeting projection, and it's attributable to we based. We based revenue that we were going to bill two dollars and seventy eight cents at, you know, three hundred and thirty five units. But we actually billed two hundred and thirty nine, no, two hundred, two dollars and thirty nine cents at that rate, we lost thirty nine cents times.
So that's the problem.
That's some of the problem.
That's most of the problem.
That, and again, the full number of billable units, yes.
Okay, so that's the problem, we gotta fix that problem. You fix that, you fix.
Or.
And the estimate of the billable units is only, obviously, it's an estimate.
It's an estimate, it's a projection.
You can put in five hundred thousand charge rate of.
Sure.
Of whatever and adjust it the next year and so forth, so we, and that number was actually lower, a lot lower than it was over the, you know, previous probably five years. Because it was down a little bit.
Right, I mean, we had years where we billed. I mean, FY eleven, we billed nine hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen units.
Yeah, so, or what you can do is wait till you have the actual usage, calculate the rates. And then build based on that, but now you're.
Going against the policy.
Three months delayed on, on everything, right?
Yeah, but you have a, a fiscally healthy utility system.
I, I understand, it's not, you can't do that, in practical basis.
I understand the policy of announcing the rates and that's fine, but you do have to take into consideration that and the fact that. You are billing at, at, at that initial rate for those first months, you do have to take that into consideration and the fact you do need to bill in a, a reserve, your reserves are low. And there is a seasonal nature of it, and sometimes we're just not gonna meet the billable projections based upon weather patterns.
And the, and the seven eighty eight is, is the five-year average, and where did you come up with that number?
I, I asked the water and sewer department to give me the, um, the billable units for the last five years.
Okay, so the reality, there's two things, is A, adjust the timing of the rate. So that you're not billing, we set a rate of two seventy eight and bill it two thirty nine, for example.
You, you, you don't need to adjust it, but you need to, you, somehow you need to build in some factor to mitigate that.
No, that's right, that's one, and the second issue is we probably really should truly, I mean, very much underestimate the usage.
Right, we should be conservative in our estimates.
Very conservative, and then if there's a year where we bill for seven eighty eight and there's a million units consumed.
You build, you build the reserves and next year you make the adjustment by taking out the reserve bill.
Right, but our costs to, the only variable in our costs that get affected by that. Are the charges to the commission, the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission.
Right.
Our costs for our people to run our system and all that others, the overhead that's to the town, that's the town of Long Meadow. Um, that part is fixed.
Right.
And so if you go too low on the estimate of the units, the rate goes up.
Oh, no, I understand that, right, right.
But, but this, this number that we pay Springfield will go up because water usage went up, but these numbers. That service doesn't change, our costs don't change.
Right, and, and you can see the volatility, I mean, that's what creates the volatility in, in the rates, yes.
I mean, going from nine hundred thousand to one point two million.
Back to a million.
Yeah, and there's nothing we can do about that, because that's their, you know.
But then again, it'll change twice in the last two years and it'll change again. Right, I mean, the good news is, is that they've, they've come down or to a, yeah, it's actually come down, so either things are postponed. Um, or their, their, you know, their cost estimates were just high in the original projection.
Yep.
Okay, so where do we go from here?
Well, we can't vote to send it to the subcommittee for further review because there's no meeting going on right now.
But, but, but the sub, but the subcommittee can call a meeting and review it on its own.
Yes. And I mean, this is really just a.
Call it good.
Yeah, well, this is just a continuation of what we talked about in September, I mean.
Right, right. This, this was the exact same thing we, we're talking about in September, this is now with updated numbers from what we have.
Jeez, what did I do, sorry about that.
A little Beatles too.
I don't know what I did, but I did something.
No, I, I guess my recommendation would be the subcommittee review the stuff and come back with a recommendation to the full board. And then have the full board act on the recommendation, right?
Mm-hmm, okay, so we have to set up the subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, Paul, maybe, you know, if we could, I, I emailed this to you too, Paul, but maybe we can tweak this, because one of the things that concerns me is that. Is that top line is based on some volume usage, I think, because they bill us by the unit, right?
They actually run a five-year average of, of our, of our consumption, so, um. Then we take, we have an average based upon the full consumption of the participating units, which are Agawam, East Long Meadow.
Right.
Long Meadow, South Wick and Springfield, um, I don't think that amount varies that much.
So I guess my question is, are, are from fiscal year sixteen to twenty there all based on the same volume and the only difference is their rate? Or is that based on their projections of a changing volume over that time?
Again, the volume is a five-year average, it's based upon the same five-year average, if I, our, our, our percent of the total share is five point seven one percent. Um, determined in spring of two thousand and fifteen, so it, it's constant throughout.
So, so those are true increases based on a, on a fixed amount?
Right, but again, that volume may change, a year ago, our, our percentage was five point six seven, so it went up four hundreds of a percent. Over a year, again, I don't, I don't think that has much impact at four one hundreds of a percent.
No, but, but my thought, Paul, was simply to convert that to a unit cost. For the City of Springfield, in other words.
Sure, it's shown as you have.
Well, but I got this by dividing this by this.
Absolutely.
But what I'm saying is, we know what this number is from the City of Springfield, so what we do is generate this by multiplying this times this. Because in fact, what we ought to do is put that number as this times this plus our two percent loss factor. Because this is what we're billing, but we're buying two percent more, right? Or whatever, though, high flushing plus.
No, all that stuff is already figured in the water, because we're paying for it.
No, it's not, Paul, I don't, no, we, we buy from the City of Springfield at a dollar per unit price.
I'm not sure what, what the actual amount is we pay the City of Springfield, but.
Or not the City of Springfield, City of Springfield Commission.
Yeah, the, the commission, but I think that amount, um. I think that would already be built into their numbers, though, even though there's a, a small percentage loss, that is taken into consideration by our billable units.
No, it's not, we, we.
I mean, what you're, you're saying is that we actually purchase, let's say, eight hundred thousand billable units. But we're only billing at seven hundred and eighty five.
Correct. Right.
But I think the eight hundred thousand billable units are built into the Springfield charges in FY sixteen of eight hundred and sixteen thousand.
I suspect that's right, that's right.
I, I think it, it does, it's already taken into consideration.
That's what I'm saying, we pay the, the total charge for the water.
Fine, I was just trying to say, if we know the actual Springfield commission unit charge, we could get a better number on that. Because then we could say, well, what if we, instead of seven eighty five, we used eight hundred thousand, kinda thing.
I don't actually think.
That's not gonna change, okay.
They give us a per-unit cost.
Okay, it's, we get a percentage of their overall operating cost.
They give us an estimate, and then once the full year is done, they look at all the consumption for that year. They re-refine what the percentage is and then they, what they call true up. Either you owe us a little bit more money or we owe you a little bit money, that's how they operate theirs.
So one of the problems with this is at the end of the fiscal year, where we think it's gonna be next year eight hundred and sixteen thousand, they're gonna come back and say, oh no, here's what it really was.
They're gonna adjust that up and down somewhat, yes.
Right, whereas this number is a budget, we know what it is, this number is built in with our debt service. But this number may fluctuate, not only based on usage, but also based on our share of.
Well, not only on our usage, but the, but the usage of the other entities.
Right, okay, yeah, all right, so, all right, sorry, now I know what we need to do, I think.
Okay.
That, that didn't sound positive now, I need to know what I do, I think.
We need to make some decisions about.
Yeah.
You know, billing ti- timing and, and.
Capital and reserves.
Capital and reserves and all that.
Whether we're smoothing or not, um, the multiple billing cycles and the different units that are going out and the different cycles and the rates that they're being billed at.
I mean, you, you, we just made the point and I forgot about the true up. Technically speaking, we're not aware of the, of the full rate from our provider.
Until after the fiscal year's closed.
At the time of consumption either, so to maintain the, the principle, to maintain the policy when it doesn't, when it's not being applied to us, has hamstrung us financially. And were it that we had the ability, I mean, you could, you could conceive of the next bill. Being the true up, but that would be the true up on top of the projected rate you're gonna need and that would really send. Especially the first time you do that, it would send rates, you know, through the roof, and so I think it's. You know, we really need to take a hard look at the impact on that. So, anyway, are we good with this, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
My computer shut down by itself before, that's why.
No, that's fine, I, I just wanted to, because I, Paul, I thought that was a better way to put it up there.
That's fine, I, again, I think it's the same information portrayed in a different fashion and you put in reserves, which I did not, that's all.
Thank you.
I, I think it's the same material, though, for the most part.
Do we wanna do sewer?
Sewer, it's the same discussion.
I don't think we want to do sewer too.
Okay, that's fine.
But I think we need to have.
I, I mean, you have the same discussion, what are you gonna build in for reserves, you have the Springfield charges. And the fact that you're billing out at one half of the year, the rate that's already set, and then the, the rate that you project is only, is half a year. You get the same issues going on with the sewer. I mean, sewer has a little bit more of a fun balance right now, which, which is, which is good. Um, but, and sewer doesn't seem to fluctuate as much because of the cutoff. Uh, usually, you know, the cutoff is hit in a dry year when people are watering their lawns, but once they hit a certain level. It's only the water consumption that, that's, that's going up per se, and the sewer is, is relatively stable. That's why I did not change the, uh, the estimate on sewer, even though we're a hundred thousand dollars short this year with the, with the sewer revenue. Um, basically based upon a, a wet year and people not consuming that much water. Um, and that's going to happen to us in the seasonal nature of it.
Can I just ask a question, Paul, the, so you've shown us the retained earnings balance for the sewer. Sewer enterprise fund and for the water enterprise fund.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if you could also just put down for each year the, just the total amount that was used for capital projects. Rather than for truing up or, or adjusting the, for water rate variances? Because I, I think we used a lot, we intentionally used a lot of the sewer enterprise fund for. Uh, retained earnings fund for capital projects far more than we did for water, is that true?
Oh, no, absolutely, um, the FY fifteen amount is shown here on sewer. Um, it's, it's almost two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars that we used out of the sewer. For capital, it, it's, it's, it's a little bit less than the amount showed because we used some for in the OPEB. Uh, so it's about two hundred and eighty five, you know, two hundred and eighty thousand was used for capital out of the sewer, this is only FY fifteen. And only about seventy thousand was used out of the water for capital, and I think those were for vehicles more than, and, uh, more, more than lines or anything to that nature.
So if you, so the, the decline from six twenty two to three eighty six. About two hundred and eighty five thousand of that can be attributed to capital, is that our two hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes.
To capital, okay. So that's a lot of it.
Yeah, that's, that's basically it, I have.
Okay.
I, I have our revenues being short by a hundred thousand, but I have us estimated to turn back about a hundred and fifty thousand.
So.
So, I mean, those are gonna net out, so everything, everything out of retained earnings was basically geared towards capital.
So, so when you have this fiscal year sixteen estimate for the sewer retained earnings, the three eighty six, is that before the turnback or after the turnback?
That takes into consideration the turnback, on, on the bottom of, of the sheets.
Yeah.
Mark, where I did the, like, the sewer rate.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give you the sewer retained earnings at the beginning of the year. And then I should show, show proposed capital and other uses, two hundred and eighty six thousand. And I have revenues, excess deficiency, a hundred thousand in deficiency.
Okay, yeah.
And then the appropriation turnback excess deficiency of a hundred and fifty, that's, and then I end up with a three eighty six, that's. Those are my estimates from the beginning of the year to the beginning of next fiscal year or the end of this fiscal year, whichever way you wanna. Whatever term you wanna use, the end of one is the beginning of the next.
So we've, we, we're gonna have to take at least a year or so off from using these retained earnings funds for capital expenditures.
Certainly on the water side.
Certainly on the water side, you, you, there's nothing.
Sewer side is still a little lower than we want it to be.
Uh, you, you know, I, I guess my recommendation, if, if there was something smaller. Again, we're, we're looking at a year from now, if, if we see the revenues coming in at, they're, they're really high, um, and we're looking good. And if there's a, a project that's a hundred thousand dollars or maybe in that vicinity, I would say use it. But if, if we see the sewer revenues. Um, but if, if, if we see the sewer revenues a year from now not coming to where they should be, you know, that's when you call the timeout, that's exactly what we did on the water.
Okay.
I knew that the water wasn't gonna meet it, we, there was no proposal to use any of that water, uh, just because of, of that very reason, we weren't meeting estimates.
So should we extend that watch also to our general capital expenditures, when we, when the capital planning committee says, you know, we're buying a truck in fifty percent, you know, capital fifty, twenty five percent water, twenty five percent sewer, they ought, also ought to have the same watch out about that money coming out of the water and sewer retained earnings?
Right, I think with the general fund, we actually do that also, though, too, because again, there are years that we haven't gotten up to the full two percent where it used to be, because operating revenues were, were not, again, we, we were getting cut by the state, our operating revenues weren't growing, so we geared towards, uh, our operating, yeah, our operating revenues weren't growing, so we geared, instead of putting it towards capital, we geared towards, uh, operating expenses.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that, that we, uh, make sure the capital planning commission knows that, 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 uh, we, we're watching the retained earnings funds, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'm supposed to be interviewed tonight, no.
You didn't get a message?
No, I've been teaching, I, I had to work today.
Okay, um, well, are you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set, if you're all set.
I'm all set, thanks, Mike.
Okay, so for the folks that are, if you're still on LCTV, thanks for watching, and, uh, we'll see you at the next meeting, which is June fifteenth, thank you.